Order the Blackout County Board of Supervisors, March 12th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Trelka?
Here.
White?
There.
Little?
Here. Do you please join us in a moment of silence? Join us and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, item one, agenda received as proposed or as amended. Any questions or comments for the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry. Item two is public comments. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the board this time? It's not an agenda item. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Cornell Housman. I live at 343 Albany Street.
Thank you.
I was recently, property was sold at auction. And I'm trying to do everything I possibly can to retain my property due to my disability. I got a question, if possible, for you guys. Each, every one of you at the county supervisor. Had you had the proper information about my disability, would y'all still put my property for auction? Mr. Rita Smith, if Department of Human Service had did a proper job and let them know about my disability, would my property still be sold? And being disabled, I gotta go through all this, and they telling me still, I need attorney. If I can't afford to pay my taxes, then how am I gonna afford attorney? They rushed my property to market when I was months ago, trying to get them just to hold up till I can prove to them I'm disabled, been disabled since 2013. They allowed me to pay my taxes back in December of... No, back in March or April of 2018, but my property was still sold. They taking advantage of who in my condition gonna try to pursue this. I also favor people that bid on disabled people's houses, just gonna get them, 'cause we can't do nothing about it. I pray that y'all listen to me and at least take this 427.9, and if y'all familiar with this, if y'all ain't, please read it, and I'm sure it says right here, according to our codes, y'all got the authority to reverse this. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, moving on to item three is claims and payments. Resolution aim, please.
The county's expenditures this week total $437,955.52. 437-955.52, and that includes approximately $197,000 for the dump truck for the secondary roads.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, is there any comments or questions on the resolution?
Do they have the truck yet?
Yeah, we got it, uh, two weeks ago.
Okay, roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little? Yes. Okay, resolution B.
The amount that we're paying for Country View totals $147,429.11. The bulk of that, $144,329, is our final debt payment that Country View is paying to the CIP Debt Service Fund for the bonds that were issued many years ago for projects there.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Little?
Okay, moving on to item four, this is to receive project updates from Department Heads and our elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Brief roads update this morning. The paved road system is in pretty good condition. The gravel road system is poor in many locations. The roads are very soft. They have been frozen a few hours in the morning, so the graders have been able to get in there for a few hours to push some of the snow back. That's what they were doing yesterday. By mid-morning, they've been softening up quite a bit, and we're trying to stay off them at that point in the day. There are a lot of frost boils. The frost is starting to come out of the ground, so the top four to five inches is very soft, and it does us no good to drive a truck with 15 tons of rock on it and then try and spread that out. So there's really not much we can do about it right now, probably for the next few weeks. So you may expect, can expect some phone calls, and you can just pass those on to me. And can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on to item five, minutes approved for March 5th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have a hearing today. We'll be proposing our Blackout County budget for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Moving on to our consent agenda, be made with a single resolution. Is there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Trelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item eight, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approved the tentative agreement with Unit Six. This is our attorneys. If you remember last week, we got an update on it, and he said it'd just be a matter of time, so this kind of fall in line with the others.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item nine, this is a resolution that the letter of support for increasing the number of beds at pillar of Cedar Valley be approved, and Director Chair assigned for the same.
So moved.
Second.
Pete, I saw we were gonna make some revisions on that letter. Did they ever do that?
The letter looks fine to me. The letter I received yesterday looks fine to me. It's a very well-written letter, and I don't see any problems with it.
Okay, so Board, you got any questions?
I just say, we definitely need more mental health beds, so I'm gonna support this letter, but just say that I still hear from employees every week, and I don't think everything is quite as rosy as the picture that they're painting to us, but the fact still remains that we need more mental health beds in this community.
There was two units, I think it was Aspen and Pines, that they were increasing beds in, so that was good. Or they'd like to, I guess that they're requesting.
I know Mr. Lincoln of Community Services was all for it.
Yep.
He said, I think he was willing to do a letter.
He would do a letter of support also.
That's good, too.
Okay, then. You have a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item B, this is a resolution with request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer, be approved. This is for an industrial snow blower at the cost of $6,000 from Elliott Equipment, Devon Park.
So moved.
Second.
So historically, the secondary roads department, we have had a snow blower back in the 70s, 80s, and 90s. When I first arrived here about 10 years ago, that piece of equipment was, had reached the end of its life. It had failed to work properly. We would like to replace that. Partly, this is driven by this year's extraordinary snow conditions, you know, near-record-breaking snow levels. However, this is an unbudgeted item. We did not plan for this to be in this year's budget. We do have unspent capital money in FY19 that we wouldn't be asking that we be able to purchase this snow blower. We feel that, or I feel that this is a good expenditure that would allow us to buy a snow blower that we have talked to the city of Waukon. They were the former users, the former owners of the snow blower. They say it ran very well for many years for them. It was just time for them to purchase a new one. So we feel that it has a good service record. We've looked at the service records. That this is a good chance for, a good opportunity for us to buy one at a low cost instead of purchasing a new one in the next several fiscal years. So I would ask that we be allowed to purchase the snow blower. Maybe we won't use it for the next several years, but we do, I do feel that there's, we're probably going to be needing a snow blower in the next 10 years or so. You know, in the future, we're going to be at a point where we do need a snow blower sometime again.
This seemed like an exceptionally low cost for, I think if I understood the email correct, it was $140,000 for the new equipment, or maybe that was incorrect?
Yes, so this manufacturer from South Dakota, they do have varying new models from apparently $100,000 to $140,000, so we didn't look at other vendors as well, but this seemed to be fairly local, and they seem to be well-made snow blowers used by cities and counties in the area. So this was just a product that was on an auction that we looked at.
So, hold on. What's the last year we had one? Exactly what year?
I want to say it was probably in 2009 or 10.
So 10 years.
Yeah.
And why haven't we had one since?
Primarily, we haven't had a need for one for the last four or five years. Approximately seven or...
Last 10 years, apparently.
We had bad winters in 2008 and 2009, 10, and we did have to rent a loader to push the snow back. This wouldn't take the place necessarily of a loader. A loader's able to push the snow back a little bit further than than a snow blower would, but a snow blower would have been very useful this, in years of heavy snow. It allows more people to be out working to push the snow back. It allows us to throw the snow back when the road is very narrow, the gravel road system in particular. It would work very well at intersections. Just areas where we're having a hard time keeping up with the amount of snow that's falling. And it's piling up, and we need to push it back. We need to get the gravel roads open to the two lanes, for example.
How much do we pay for, to use a loader, when we rented the loader? How much did that cost us?
So a loader costs approximately $1,200 a week.
And we've used those, we said, I think you said, three weeks, just recently?
This past month, we had used it, I believe, four weeks. Yeah. We took it back, I believe, Friday.
That wasn't bond money, was it, Susan, what she's talking about?
I don't believe so.
No, this would, the money to rent the loader just came out of our...
The blower.
But the blower that you're considering?
This wasn't any bond money, was it?
Proceeds.
Leftovers from bonds.
This blower that she wants to purchase now?
Not the blower, but the funds.
The $6,000 for the blower?
Right.
She said it's leftover capital. Is it capital that came out of her budget, or was it bond money?
Oh, no. Capital in the secondary roads budget.
Yeah.
Is it self-propelled or an attachment?
It would attach to the front of a loader.
So we have a loader? Or we're gonna have to rent a loader every time?
No, we have a loader at Elk Run. We have a loader at, I'm sorry, we have a loader at Longfellow, and we have a loader at La Porte City.
It'll be back here in two years or less for a brand-new one, replacement, so no doubt.
I think the likelihood of these kind of stronger storm events are just gonna increase every year we go on. I think we're just two tenths, a couple tenths away from the record snowfall this year, so I think this makes us better prepared for next year, and I appreciate that you looked around and found such a great deal as well.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Okay, moving on to item C, this is our hearing on the proposed Blackout County budget for the fiscal year 2019 to 2020. The time is 9:17. Item one is introductions by Tom Little. First, we'll go there, and then the Board come around here. So Grant, let's start you. I want the elected officials and department heads, if we have them out there. And I see, again, we don't have a lot of our department heads nor some of our elected officials. You would think they'd be here for the fiscal budget. Yeah. Okay, Grant, you wanna start it out?
Grant Veder, County Auditor, pleased to be here.
And it's real nice to see you.
It's good.
Susan Deaton, Finance Director.
Pete Burke, Assistant County Attorney.
Kim Veder, IT Director.
Sammy Smith, County Recorder.
TJ Koenigstall, Sausage.
Rita Schmidt, Treasurer.
Kathy Nicholas, Engineer.
You'll have to love this, the director.
Mike Henderson, County Conservation.
Okay.
Ryan Williams, Blackout County Attorney.
Is that it? Back there, I can't see. We're gonna put a mirror up on that above that door, so you can see there. And back here, we have...
Before giving maintenance superintendent.
Okay, and then up here?
Dan Trelka, Board of Supervisors.
Linda Layland, Board of Supervisors.
Tom Little, Board of Supervisors.
Chris White, Board of Supervisors.
Chris Schwartz, Board of Supervisors.
Okay, get that part out of the way. Okay, the next item is a presentation by Susan Deaton, Finance Director. You gonna put that overhand?
Yep. Roy, can you put my screen up? While we're getting that set up.
There we go.
I will be presenting an overview of the FY20 budget with highlights, but we will have a more detailed FY20 budget book that I will put online that will be available along with this presentation. So that detail provides a detail of each governmental fund and all of the departments along with some additional information. So looking at the FY20 budget, of course, one of the significant factors that impacted our budget last year was the need to include support for Country View, and we had included $2 million last year for Country View. We offset that with $500,000 of debt service reserves. The facility, of course, was sold to a private company in December, and so we are no longer looking at that as an impact on our budget for this year. We had a 4.3% growth in taxable valuation this year, and that helped us provide additional revenues to offset both the increases in salary and benefits and capital expenditures that were planned. And as a result of these changes, we were initially looking at a 3.4% decrease in our countywide tax levy rate for FY20. We had a lot of discussions about the use of reserves. We ended up using 1 million in excess debt service fund reserves to reduce the countywide levy rate by 5.8% for this fiscal year. And we had talked some about our general fund reserves and spending those down. There was some concern about possible proposed property tax reform legislation. But using our debt service reserves, we do have excess funds there that really we need to develop a plan to use, so I feel like this was a good use of that. We should not see an impact on this next year, because our debt service expenditures will decrease by more than a million, and that's not including the public safety radio debt. And then we are looking at a continual decline of debt service over the next several years as we pay off our bonds, and anticipated bonding for capital projects. We don't really have any anticipations at this time, and so that should not have an impact on us. Taxable valuation, we did see a growth of 4.3%. That's compared to a 3.1% average for the past 10 years. The rural-only portion of taxable valuation also increased 3%, and then we saw a decrease in the TIP valuation of 13 million or 2.7%. I have some graphs. This shows our taxable valuation growth. This is the total county for the last 10 years, and you can see the 4.3% is actually the second highest it's been in the last five years. This is the rural only, and we saw growth this year of 3%, and that's the history for the past 10 years. Our tax levy rates, the countywide tax levy rate paid by residents in incorporated areas will decrease approximately 39 cents from $6.69 to $6.30 per thousand dollars. The rural-only tax levy rate will increase approximately 8 cents from $3.50 to $3.58. Combined rural levy that residents in unincorporated areas will pay will decrease by 31 cents from $10.19 to $9.88. And then we've always looked at our public safety radio system levy kind of separately. That, there was a little decrease this year, 4 cents, down to 21 cents per thousand dollars. And this will be the last year for that. This is our trend for the past 10 years for the countywide tax levy. This includes the public safety radio, which started in FY16. That was that big increase in FY16. But you can see the $6.30, that includes the public safety radio, and it's the lowest it's been since we started that. This graph shows the rate without the radio debt, so removing the radio debt from that, you can see we are down to $6.09. This is the second lowest that it's been in the last 10 years. The rural tax levy trend has continued to increase. We had a drop at one point in FY16, but we've been on an incline since then, and it is, and FY20 will be $3.58. This just shows the composition of the countywide, just between the different funds. So we've got the general basic and general supplemental. That makes up the biggest part. Broke down debt service between the radio and the remaining debt service, and then mental health. And this is for the unincorporated, including the rural portion. And so you can see the different components of that. We made some changes this year to our expenditures that we allocate to the rural-only fund. In the previous years, 100% of the sheriff's patrol division salary and benefits were allocated to the rural fund. As we looked at the increases in our rural tax levy, the growth in rural valuation hasn't really kept pace with the increases in salary and benefits. And then having some discussions with the sheriff's department, we decided that an allocation between general fund and rural fund would be more appropriate based on the services that are provided by the patrol division to those incorporated areas. And so with some discussions with the sheriff and the head of patrol, it was determined to allocate 25% of expenditures for salary and benefits to the general fund, which is paid by everybody in the county, and 75% to the rural fund to more accurately reflect that, the services that are provided. We also made a change. We had been including the expenditures for our portion, the county's portion of Consolidated Communications Center, and that is based on the usage in the rural areas. Each department, I mean, each city gets allocated their share of that budget, and so we had been putting that into our general fund, which is distributed to everybody, and it was decided that it more appropriately belonged in the rural fund. So we did that change. The net increase in expenditures to the general fund and the corresponding decrease in expenditures to the rural fund due to these adjustments was $304,447 in FY20. And this just is a graph that shows the expenditures that are included in the rural fund. The most of it is the transfer to secondary roads. It makes up 53.9%. Sheriff's Patrol makes up 34.7, and then we have the Consolidated Dispatch now at 5%. County libraries, 3.2, planning and zoning, and then just some other rural services, very minor. Talking about some revenue highlights, budgeted revenues excluding transfers in totaled $62,571,905. This is an increase of $167,743, just 0.3% from FY19 reestimated revenues. Property taxes decreased $501,318, or 1.4%. Property taxes are largest source of revenue, comprising 57.6% of total revenue. Intergovernmental revenues will increase $672,148, or 4.9%, mainly due to the reduction in the amount estimated for the commercial backfill, which we reduced about a third, or $348,000, offset by an increase in anticipated grant revenue for conservation projects. This shows the various revenues by source. Property taxes makes up our largest, 57.6%, followed by intergovernmental at 22.8%. And then the other sources of revenue, things like licenses, charges for services, penalties and interest, et cetera. This graph shows departmental revenues, and so you see the engineer at almost 4.5. That's road use taxes. Other departments that generate revenue, Health Department, the treasurer, Consolidated Dispatch is their reimbursements from the entities, Conservation, and then smaller amounts for the other departments. Expenditure highlights, budgeted expenditures excluding transfers will total $65,116,284. This is a decrease of $2,686,846, or $4,000. This is a decrease of 2,686,846 or 4% compared to reestimated expenditures. Salaries and benefits, approximately 35 million in FY '20. That makes up 53.7% of our total expenditures. Salary and benefits increase approximately 558,878 or 1.6%. And that's because we had a net decrease of FTEs of like 21 FTEs. Across the board, salary increases ranged from 2.5% to 5%. And health insurance benefits increased by 5%. In the different expenditure service areas, physical health and social services decreased approximately 1.7 million. And this is due to the elimination of the 2 million in support for Country View. County environment and education increased approximately 958,000. This is mainly due to planned capital expenditures for conservation, the Wolf Creek Bridge replacement and reconstruction on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. We did shift some expenditures from health department, from the county environment and education service area to the physical health and social services area. So that offset that a little bit. Administration expenditures decreased by approximately 350,000 due to decreasing capital expenditures for the maintenance department. In FY '19, we had a new IP phone system included in that. Debt service expenditures decreased approximately 1.5 million due to two revenue bonds being paid off in FY '19. This graph shows expenditures by function. Public safety and legal services is our largest at 35.1%. That's the sheriff, attorney, consolidated dispatch. Roads and transportation at 11.9, physical health and social services at 11.7, and then the other ones make up smaller, less than 10%. This shows departmental expenditures. The sheriff, you can see, is the highest, just slightly over 16 million. And then the next would be the engineer, and then the various other departments, smaller Looking at our personnel, total FTEs for the county is 394.7 for FY '20, a decrease of 21 from FY '19 adopted budget. Health department reduced FTEs by 21 due to the elimination of school nursing contract with Waterloo and continued restructuring of their department. Some other changes, county social services decreased by one. The sheriff's office, we added a new civilian detention officer, and we added a new office specialist in the treasurer's office. This shows FTEs by department. With the sheriff, almost, I believe it's 138 or 139, almost 140. And then the other departments, health department is the next highest in FTEs there. Our full-time equivalent trend in the last 10 years, this does not include Country View. And so a lot of that in the last couple of years has been the decline in the health department and the restructuring there and the elimination of the school nursing contracts. Earlier on, we had also the closure of the youth shelter caused some of that decline in previous years. Capital improvement projects. For, we were going to be utilizing our, both our capital improvement projects fund and our technology equipment fund. So in the technology equipment fund, we have the election precinct laptops and printers and content management module for the financial software, combined total of 130,000. Other capital improvement projects, and these include all of our capital improvements except for conservation, 632,000, including a new boiler and water heater replacement for the jail, carpet for the second floor of the courthouse, renovation of the veteran affairs office, and then some other smaller renovations and remodeling. Conservation capital expenditures total 1.3 million, including the replacement of the Wolf Creek Bridge and reconstruction on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. Our debt has been declining. Total outstanding debt at the beginning of FY '20 will be 17,170. This is a decrease of 7 million from FY '19. And then in FY '20, we will be paying off 5.6 million, bringing our outstanding debt down to 11.5 million. This graph shows principal and interest payments on debt for FY '20 through FY '26. When all of our bonds, current bonds will be paid off, we're going to have a big drop here from FY '20 to FY '21. And then some decline, and then another drop from FY '23 to FY '24. Debt by category, 73% of our outstanding bonds are in roads and bridges. We've got 18.9% in capital improvements, and then we have our radio bond. This will be the final year for that. The rollback effect. The rollback on residential properties this year increased 1.3 points to 56.9180. And this is the percentage of assessed value that is taxed. Other rollbacks, ag land was an increase up to 56.1324. Commercial industrial stayed the same at 90%, and multi-residential decreased to 75%, 3.75 points. So the impact on taxes this year, based on $100,000 assessed value, residential owners in incorporated areas will pay $13.48 less than FY '19, a 3.6% decrease. Rural residential owners will pay $4.61 less. That's a 0.81% decrease. And ag land owners, approximately the same, 0.42 less, 0.7% decrease. Does anybody have any questions?
The, if this is adopted, or if adopted, what will our reserves be at then as far as percent? I mean, we're kind of playing around with that 33, 35, 38. Where will it end up then?
So we were looking at our general fund reserves. And because we decided to use the debt service reserves, that doesn't impact that. So we will still be up at the, you know, we were at 38% in FY, at the end of FY '18. And so that's sort of what we're looking at. That's if we use the 2 million towards that Cedar Wopsi Bridge. But I think we have some other opportunities. I know the board would like to look at decreasing those. And so I think that's a work session that we could have to look at capital projects and other upcoming things in roads and bridges that we have to discuss those reserves.
Grant, originally, the reason why we had to come back on this is you sent an email out on that levy. Have you heard anything more about it? The legislation did anything? Did it make it out of committee, or is it dead, or?
I haven't heard any more about it.
I haven't either. I tried to look, I can't find anything.
I think the email that we saw probably last week mentioned that they were going to be meeting Wednesday this week, that that still hasn't been pulled. And so it did go out of the first funnel, and they do expect something to happen this year. We just don't know what. But meeting's not till tomorrow.
Yeah, I think expecting something to happen this year is probably the best way to put it. Whether it's going to take that form or something else, and whether it's going to be something that is, you know, fully debated and worked out in, you know, in regular session, or if it's going to be one of those things that comes in last minute in an omnibus bill, is anybody's guess.
Okay, board, does anybody get any more questions for Susan? Okay, looks like item three is the reading of the Blackhawk County Compensation Board salary schedule for FY '25. Mr. Beeter.
The, thank you. The elected officials' salaries, as recommended by the compensation board, show increases of 4% for all the elected officials except the sheriff, which shows a 5% increase. And those increases translate to these amounts. For the attorney for FY '20, 132,867. The auditor, 84,132. The board supervisors, 39,372. The recorder and the treasurer, 84,011. And the sheriff, 114,216.
And again, those were the recommendations by the compensation committee.
That's correct.
Okay, do we need any action on that?
No, you already took action.
Okay. Moving on to item four, public comments or questions? Anybody out there have a question on anything? Can ask the board or Susan? Anybody? I think you look like you want to ask something.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Okay. Okay, then, well, we'll go up to item five. This is comments from the board of supervisors. Board, does anybody have any comments?
I'd just say, I think the most thing I'm most excited about in this year's budget is the creation of the veterans' center. I think we're going to help a lot of people out in this community for something that they've been working towards for a long time, and it's going to be great to see that come to realization this next year.
Okay. Dan?
Briefly, we had different personalities. We had different philosophies. We had different political affiliations, but we came together on a good budget.
Okay. Susan. Or Linda.
Susan.
Susan.
I guess, and each budget cycle, you like to take a look at how we are, our primary responsibility being the county's supervisors. And I guess looking at this year's budget, excuse me, and I guess the financial condition of the county, to me, is very good. Our reserves are high, and we've talked about that, needing to look at what we want to do with those. But they're very healthy. Our bond rating's good. We just settled the contracts, the union contracts, for three years. I think that was very positive. And we didn't do anything to damage the relationships we've had with our staff on that previously. We have, our debt service is going to be, or our debt's going to be paid down within 10 years. I think it's a very short term. I think that's good for us. And I think, I know we have a difference of opinion on Country View, but I think that we were able to find a solution for Country View last year that was a positive solution that allowed us to keep it open and have beds to it and keep most of the employees working. And also, like I said, having this expansion, I think that's all good. So I think for the supervisors, I want to thank all of you for the work that's been done the last year to get the budget to where it is as well. I want to, we didn't do it alone. It was with the help of our elected officials and our staff, our department heads. And so thanks to all of you as well. But I want to particularly thank Susan. I don't think it's something I've done and I should have done, that for the last year, you've worked very hard on Country View, and it's been almost a full-time job just doing Country View and working through that process. So that in addition to what you've done. But I want to say thank you very much for all the work that you did to get us through that. Thank you.
Hey, Craig.
First off, I agree with what Chris said in regards to the VA Center. I think that will be a real plus for us out there, other than the last couple of years. And I think with Yolando there, it'll continue on the path it is. We're on a positive path for our veterans and things that are being done for them now, and we need to keep it that way. In regards to Country View, like Ms. Leyland said, I agree with what you said. I've had a lot of friends work at different establishments, big businesses that have closed down, and it's unfortunate, or get bought out by somebody else, and they go to work for somebody else, and it's a completely different situation. That's not anything we can control. At least, like what was stated, we're going to have beds available for people, which is there is a real need in our community for, for mental health issues. I'd like to see more work done on stuff for the children here in our community for mental health that's been neglected too long. We've got a lot of kids that are going down the wrong path, and we could help them, catch them at an early age and turn their lives around and make for a better community. I think that was brought up at the city council also. So I'm not real happy with some of the things that happened with the budget, but we've got it done. Was that, was, did ours end up being 2.5% or did it end up 4% for supervisors?
2.5.
What he read was just simply the recommendation from the compensation board. That's why I wanted to make a point to the public that, that wasn't what the board settled on.
Okay.
Okay. I was just going to kind of echo what Dan said. We've got five different philosophies up here, and that's the way it works. And it works pretty well, to be honest with you. Obviously, I was concerned with the high reserves that the county has, and still concerned. And even though there are some factors why our budget was where it was at this year that helped it to keep it where it's at, the real main reason, I think, is the way we prepared ourselves over the last 10 years. And by doing that each year, I think it's reflecting now on how our budget should look. And there's no reason whatsoever that next year should be just as good as the year that we've had this year. So again, we didn't agree on a lot of things, and I still, I think overall, it's a good budget, and I'll be supporting it. But again, I think those reserves are too high. And I think what we need to do is not jump on projects if it ain't 100% needed, rather than looking at where that can help us at the next budget cycle. And I too understand, and I've known, I've done this long enough, you don't balance budgets with reserves. But when you have the type of reserves we have, it's time to get them back down a little bit and being responsible and physically responsible to the citizens. So again, I thank everybody up here, and also all our department heads, elected officials. And it's, this is probably the latest we've ever gone. We finished up before, in the end of January and early February. So this is the latest we've ever been, so.
Well, Country View kind of ended up impacting that till December 31st.
Okay.
Just one other thing, Mr. Little. I think the 2028 plan, since we've been, since that was instituted, that's helped us put us on the right track for a lot of things, too. You see down at the bottom, building desirable communities and applying technological, technology to serve and work together. Like Sven said, we've got five different personalities. Don't want to see anybody's personality change, but.
Well, I won't.
Or me?
I won't.
I was going to say.
You can put that in writing, Mr. James.
We knew that.
Yeah.
Okay, then, anybody else? Are we all done, board? Okay, now we'll get into it, then. Item six is a motion received, please unfile proof of publication, notice of public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, number seven is motion to close the public hearing after oral and written comments are received. Did we have any written comments?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. A debate is a resolution that proposes Blackhawk County budget for fiscal year 2019 to 2020 is published in the county official newspapers, February the 27th, 2019. February 28th, 2020 to be approved and adopted as published.
Full move.
Second.
Any questions on that one? Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. And item nine is a resolution appropriations be approved at 100% for the Blackhawk County budget for FY '20, FY '20.
Full move.
Second.
Any questions on that one? Roll call, please.
Felka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, reports from the board. If anybody's interested, at 10:30, Intercog's going to be in here. They contacted the county, and they want just to kind of do a little brief overview on Intercog and what they can do for us, what they've been doing in the community. So you're welcome to attend, and that's at 10:30. I asked them if they wanted to come to a regular board meeting, but they decided to do it this way. So again, you're all welcome to come, or let whoever else is out there know. And it'll be in here about 10:30. And there might be some stuff there, Mike, on grants and stuff. I don't know what, Kevin's going to be here, the director, and maybe he'll have some good stuff that he can relay on to our various departments. Okay? Okay? Anybody else from the reports?
I'll just report back really quickly. It was a really excellent NACO legislative conference in Washington, D.C. last week. And I'll be placing on the agenda two weeks from today, while Susan's back from vacation, just a kind of complete presentation on all the different presentations that I intended. But really, a lot of great information on the census, the cash bail reform movement in the country, as well as just making data-driven decisions, and all the resources are out there. So I'm excited to share that presentation with everybody.
Bring any money back?
There's opportunities out there.
Okay. Anybody else from the board? Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.